I've seen so many.
Well, I had so much fun. I'd never been out west. I mean, I did Colorado, but... I've never been to the west coast. Redwood, the west coast, and the tri-. No, we skated by that on the seco-. We got in that traffic for a little bit.
Yeah, Lou told me. Okay, everyone, let's go ahead and get started. I'm sorry, Bill.
It's okay.
Well, call me on it.
He's not talking down the phone. It's seven o'clock.
This is my call.
I don't know.
So, yeah, I guess it is. Okay. Well, we'll start without Jeff. I want to call the meeting to order. Well, I can't start without Jeff. We've got to have a roll call. Who do we start with tonight?
Chris is here. I'm here.
Chris?
How about the pledge or the prayer?
Here, come on.
Yeah, here we go.
Possibly a prayer.
Now he's a little late, Bill.
Technical difficulties.
Roll call?
Yes, sir.
Chris Ed?
Present.
Mary Jean Greger?
Present.
Mitch Magnus? Linda DeWolfe?
Present.
Bill Boswell?
Present.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Present.
Joel Williams?
Present.
Wayne Coe?
Present.
You have a call. Okay, thank you. Pastor?
Yes.
Your honor.
All right. Stand, pray. God, we just thank you for your grace. Lord, thank you for the rain. Thank you for the sunshine. Thank you, God, for Harrison and, Lord, the great city that we get to live in. God, we just pray for wisdom as leaders and representatives of the people. God, that you would guide us and, Lord, as we conduct business, that we do so with integrity and everything because of you. And we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Do you want me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Okay, need an approval of the minutes of August.
Seven minutes.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Let's get started with Chief Crady. Something a little different tonight.
John, you want to start with the meth, but they'll do that for me while I do this.
He had to talk slower.
Anyway, just to catch y'all up the other day, we had a... One of our patrol officers coming through town stopped a vehicle. We searched it. We got some methamphetamine and stuff out of it. Was, I believe, was it sixty?
Six ounces.
Yeah, six ounces. And we had a firearm as well, so there's quite a bit of charging on it luckily. Once again, it was just passing through town. It was not a local guy. I talked to our narcotics officers today. They did eight home visits yesterday. They came up with no methamphetamine and just a little bit of weed. And so some of our people were still saying, if you want it, you have to go up into Missouri or somewhere. You're not going to find it in Harrison, Arkansas. That's kind of where we're at on that. And we've got some pictures and other stuff. An interesting night for you if we can get it going here.
Just the one in my neighborhood?
Yeah, we'll get to that. All right, we got it keyed and ready to go?
No.
No, I don't think so yet.
You want us to move on or?
No, let me explain it. I can do this real quick. All right, I've got, obviously, a very rough diagram of vehicles. The one with the red and the blue, that would be the police vehicle. We have implemented a new policy. Harrison Police Department, it's involving pursuit driving. It's called TBI, which stands for Tactical Vehicle Intervention. Most of you may know of this as being PIT in California. That's what they called it out there. However, Oklahoma Highway Patrol wanted to give it their own name, so they said TBI is what it is. And that's the training we receive. And basically, it's a precision maneuver. When somebody is fleeing from us, we can go up beside them, match their speed. If you want to spin that car out to your left, come up on its left side. You match your speed, you touch their bumper, you make a quarter turn. Thirty miles and above, it's going to take them out. It's going to spin them, properly stop the engine, send them off the roadway. The faster they're going, the easier it is to move. That being said, there's so many pursuits today that involve innocent people getting harmed or killed. Well, we're tasked with the job of catching the bad guy. Some departments has filled their hands up and said, "We're not going to chase anybody." Well, to me, that don't send the message out that we won't. We're going to catch you, one way or another. But let's catch them as quick as we can. So I had all the officers go through this training. I invited Chris Moore and his agency came out and went through it also. TBI, like I said, stands for Tactical Vehicle Intervention. In the pursuit, we can come up, max the speed, touch their bumper, turn, it spins them out, the chase is over. And ironically, we have used this twice in the last month. So it's paid off already. Damage to the... And it was the same officer both times that was in the pursuit. Damage to his vehicle is zero dollars. So if we can get the video going, we will watch it here in just a moment.
Maybe.
I think the last one, the person you were pursuing was up to 100 miles an hour.
Yeah, the last chase it was.
Thank you for getting him.
I'll go through this real quick, too. Get this out of the way. The monthly report for August, y'all have it there in front of you or electronically or hard copy. We worked forty-eight accidents in the month of August. Year-to-date, last year was 258. Year-to-date, this year is 243. We worked three fadels last year. Year-to-date, we've only worked one this year. Citations issued year-to-date last year was 1,527. Year-to-date this year, 2,538. We wrote 410 citations in the month of August. Warnings issued was 2,760. Year-to-date last year, this year, 3,916. Eight hundred and thirty-eight of those were written in the month of August this year. Calls for service, we had 2,227 this month. Year-to-date last year was 15,238. Year-to-date this year is 15,809. Next page, our school resource officers. They started back in August. They've already had eight counseling sessions for students, five with parents, and ten with faculty. Some of the other line items there you can look at. War Division serves 329 warrants in the month of August. Ninety-five of those were physical arrests. Warrant fees collected was 355 dollars. Animal Control answered 102 calls. Year-to-date, he has answered 795. Next page, or the next three pages, is Criminal Investigation Division. And all of their numbers are there, year-to-date for this year and also for last year. On the second page of that, reported stolen property was 11,391 dollars. We recovered 7,849 dollars of that in the month of August. Year-to-date was 232,721 dollars. We recovered 169,071 dollars. Our community engagement officers had eighteen contacts with local businesses. They do help the SROs. They had fifty-one school visits. Total number of people reached in the month of August through our community engagement officers was 2,340 people. As Chief Cangle said, our narcotics is down. That's good. Part of the investigation, FBI's in-conducts every year this year. We did see some drugs in the month of August. Methamphetamine, marijuana, kratom, which many of you may not know, it's a plant-derived. And I've got a little explanation on the next page as to what it exactly does. Depending on the amount used, you can use it as a stimulant or sedative. But it's made out of a southeast Asian evergreen tree. A lot of people drink, boil the leaves, boil the needles, and drink them. And it's a schedule one narcotic in Arkansas. Arkansas is ahead of the game for changes. None of the other states can run this. It's illegal. But it's up there with heroin and cocaine. You can legally buy it in Missouri. You come into Arkansas, we'll charge you with it, just like we would if you had heroin or cocaine. But anyway, the value of drug seize was 1,600 dollars worth of meth, 280 dollars worth of marijuana, 50 dollars worth of pills, 1,895 dollars worth of kratom, 150 dollars worth of heroin, so a total of 7,845 dollars. We had four misdemeanor arrests. Thirteen felony arrests were made. And there are several things we charged with drug trafficking in addition to the items of narcotics. Good now?
I think so.
All right, this first video, this shows some training. We have the training at the airport. Judy Petson and the airport staff was kind enough to let us use their taxiway. As I mentioned, every officer, well, that's the narcotics that Chief Cangle talked about that was seized. But every officer went through the training. It's at Christian County Sheriff's Office. Yeah, go ahead and just run it. What we're doing, we're just matching the speed. We take them right out. The TBI began on the left side. He spun out to the right side. He spun out to the right side. All right, let me set this up for you. Let's see, August 12th was Thursday night. Missouri Highway Patrol was in pursuit of this stolen vehicle, stolen Harrisonville, Missouri, which is outside of Kansas City. They got in pursuit, either in Stone or Tannehill County, lasted several minutes in their state. He actually rammed another Missouri trooper in the pursuit. Missouri calls us about the state line. We're coming into Arkansas. Sheriff's deputies and our officers go north to intercept that pursuit. Once we become involved in the pursuit, we take over around Oak Creek Springs. And where we actually perform the TBI maneuver, it's just inside the city limits. Our officer, our Harrison officer, David Alkar, is the officer that will be the lead vehicle and perform the TBI. There's the driver's a male and the passenger's a female. There was stolen merchandise from Harrisonville, Missouri, on the lane to Lady's Purse out of the...
How fast are we going, Chief?
At Sanz and Springfield.
How fast they traveling?
At the PIT, it was 88 miles an hour.
Ooh.
Sergeant Morris. Sergeant Morris told Officer Alkar, "I don't know if that chase is coming to the city." He's trying to match the speed. Guy went over. Deputy sheriff tried to throw spike straps out. The guy drove around them.
Got him.
Hit the sign?
He hit a road sign and a guy wire to a utility boat. Is that one where that ends? Okay. Next video, it's a little shorter. The deputy sheriff that was right behind Officer Alkar. It shows a little more. It shows our unit. This is Sergeant Jenkins' video, and it shows our unit in the pursuit and what it looked like from a different viewpoint there. And what you saw was transformer on the opposite side of the highway that, I guess, blew up or sparked, obviously. That guy wire put some tension on that, so... This is the gentleman. Like I said, there was a female with him. He courageously left her in the truck and got out during all this. And we took her into custody. We searched for him all night and the next day. It's very thick. The underbrush in there is very thick. Officer Alkar, Sergeant Morris, they went with the dog. They went in there. They just... We couldn't find him that night. Next afternoon, that was Thursday night, Friday morning. Next afternoon, we had reported stolen vehicle. I called Missouri Sergeant, Post Sergeant, the Highway Patrol of Missouri. Called him about the vehicle to watch for. Called Sheriff's Office, called them. Undercover officer of Missouri found the vehicle at apartment complex. We went up there, set up on it. And long story short, we caught the guy about 11:30 that night. So we arrested him there at Bull Creek Apartment Complex north of Branson. We did catch him the next day. But as you can tell, if that chaser went on into town, you got people coming and going. I mean, you saw the cars. And what we prevented there is what we would have liked to have prevented in this next video. But this next video happened last Friday, August 20th.
Friday night.
Friday night. And it started on Airport Road. Goes down Airport Road, down Industrial Park Road, onto the bypass south, all the way down to Come and Go. It turns and comes back up. The business route, comes down Harrison Hill, goes into the park, comes across Lake Shore, and we finally get close enough to where we can TBI him at South and Cherry Street, which...
Right in my front yard. It was pretty exciting in my neighborhood.
For whatever reason, the first minute of this is like black and white, then it goes to color.
Here we go. Here we go.
Were you waiting for him, Chris?
Nope.
Or he just was following?
Headline, equipment violation.
Okay.
This is the same officer that bit in the...
This is the one that has Jared? Does he have Jared?
Rocky.
Rocky. Rocky's getting real excited with everything going on.
Yeah, you can hear it.
Hey, with it's good. Something's going to happen here.
Halen is better now.
Looks like we're moving on pretty good here.
Speeds of 100 miles an hour was obtained during this pursuit on Industrial and on the bypass.
He'll make us turn in front of a private millionaire.
Now we're on Industrial Park Road.
Spoke to him about 11:30 at night. Not much traffic. It's great.
100 miles an hour, that's good. Got faster than that, most of them.
Take please. Well, you're going 73. Coming up high. All eyes on it. Go up the bridge, right up that. Somebody's starting to tail him if we can get him back. Going up on any yellow and black cars. He's driving in the... Sorry, I'm going to wear that number one mask now.
He was thinking Casey's.
He's trying to get him there. He couldn't.
Yeah.
All the stuff on the car.
Okay, run it out. It's too many buildings.
Is this person a baby?
Wow, that could have been head on. Going in the park. He's going down in my neighborhood right about.
He hit a curvy street, didn't he?
Oh, yeah. We've been watching TV until I down the blue light. He's going by my window.
Maybe they go in your neighborhood in a corner.
Pretty exciting part there.
Oh, he's tired of the ground.
Oh, yeah. He hit a curb.
You're done, dude. You hang right here and you're done.
Look, it's just going to get good, yeah. He's going to have to come up with something every meeting.
You know, that one ended up just... Now, how many corners did he go around on the roadside?
Oh, too many.
How many innocent people could have died in the hand of a... Okay? That's why, if we're going to chase him, we want to stop him as soon as possible. Couldn't catch up to this guy. He's running over 100 miles an hour. Wasn't a lot of places they could pit him on the bypass or Industrial Park Road without sending him into someone else. But the best way to prevent these people from hurting someone else is to take them out. And if they get hurt so bad, they shouldn't be running. It seems like in this day and age, everybody wants to come back and say, "Well, you shouldn't chase them." Okay, what are we supposed to do? We had, last year alone, from July, or from June, July 1st to June 30th, from last year to this July 1st, we had 443 of our citizens calling reckless drivers. If they don't want to stop, are we just supposed to let them go? We had over 132 intoxicated drivers called in. All of them was not intoxicated, obviously, but they were either sleepy something, they called it in. We need to get them stopped. And if they run, we need to stop them. So that's why, and I wanted to show y'all some of the training that we've done within the last month and how we put that training to use.
To use.
Do y'all have any questions about any of this?
I want to know the approximate cost of... It was a wise investment, that's for sure of this county.
I met Sheriff Brad Coe of Christian County, Missouri, at a law enforcement get-together in Branson this summer. And he told me that he had a deputy that was TBI certified to instruct this force. He sent both of those vehicles down that y'all saw in the airport. He sent that deputy down. We paid for the deputies... Actually, Sheriff Moore and them paid for the deputy salary. We paid for the transportation and the cost of the vehicles coming down here and anything that needed to be repaired. And we paid for his motel and his food while he was here. They did not charge us anything other than that, so it was very minimal.
Very wise move.
But before this, the officers here hadn't had any PIT or TBI training. And I just cannot see chasing somebody until either they hit someone innocent or they give up. If we're going to chase them, we're going to knock them off the road the best we can.
Yeah, by the way, the previous one that he said, "We went to Missouri at midnight," he was part of the week.
Yes, he was.
It wasn't two of his officers, so...
Well, it was a Friday night, and Missouri didn't have anybody at the time. They found someone, so... Stakeouts are boring. I mean...
I know.
Chief Coe can tell ya. They, you know, it paid off though. It paid off. We had some lucky breaks, and we caught the guy, and so...
Well, we appreciate you and your officers. Thank you. Thank you very much. Wade Phillips? No report. Excellent. Good job, Wade. How about Mark? Clint?
We have no mark, but I'll try to stand in.
Same thing.
Chief Lowery got back from inspection of the new fire truck. Things went well. I don't have a lot of details for you. He was expecting to be here this evening, and last second he couldn't make it, so... We hope to have the business license, we can defend the business license by around mid-October is our target date to advertise that, so people can start paying that at the fire. Have that on the internet and on our local media. Also, as you know, Mayor, we had a press release on our ISO.
Boy, did we.
And we are expecting this business license to help us maintain that as businesses come in and out, and we can get their inspections done, which is part of our new ISO rating. I believe my report's pretty much a standard report. I'm gonna ask you a few questions.
Any questions?
Clint, she did have a mutual assistance, but I don't kind of deal in that way.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that's probably Chief Lowery.
I think your department and Valdez Springs and Harman all three worked that.
They do that a lot. Okay. Good deal, thank you. Luke?
Not a whole lot. I did put some sheets in front of you, and for those of you who sound like numbers, I'm sure you should throw away after this, but this wasn't for me, so... The main takeaway from that, that you'll see, is that if you look over here on the right-hand side of your paper here, the percentages here, the city actually is up almost 10% as far as sales tax revenue collections for this, or for August, as compared to last year. And actually, the county is up over 14%. So, that big number that we lost in January, we're trying to catch it and track it down. We're gonna get there, hopefully. If we keep having a couple of good months like we have seen here lately, I think we can possibly do it. So, hopefully, we can get that back down to zero, and we'll be a lot better than from when they took that $180,000, so... If you guys have any questions on this, I do this every month, just to try to track and see where we're trending. You'll see the numbers kind of underneath these year over year. I thought it was kind of interesting to see, and I don't have them on this particular sheet, but even when we had the big recession back in '09 and '10, we only dropped about 2% from the previous year. And so that's really good, considering where we were at in '09 and '10, to only lose 2%. And you can see we more than made up for it over these last few years. So just kind of wanted to bring that to your attention. I know it's a big spreadsheet, maybe a little confusing, but if you got any questions, please.
Yeah, that was something that we researched because of the community center. You know, we asked ourselves, if we had another downturn with a recession, what would happen? So he went back and identified, that was probably one of the biggest recessions we've ever had in '09 and '10, and we only got hurt 2%. So Harrison's pretty good in that area. All right. Okay, David, you have anything tonight?
No, sir.
All right. Parks is...
Yeah, I got...
You got a report, that's correct.
Yeah, I got a report, I'm gonna read it to ya, um, make it this evening. Chuck wanted us to know that the Kiwanis Dog Park is coming along nicely. The fencing is complete, and the play equipment has been delivered and will be installed as soon as possible. He's currently seeding it to get grass to grow in the area where the dirt work occurred. He was also working to finalize the rules, which will be posted on the signage and the location for the, I guess, the different dogs. They had an e-game tournament Saturday 21st at the youth center. It was a Fortnite tournament. They had about 40 people participate. He started a new team basketball league called Be Elite Basketball for 5th and 6th graders, partnering with the elite basketball organization in area schools. They have over 300 kids on 40 teams. There are six Harrison teams, and the others are from area schools, with some as far away as Missouri to Marshall. So it'll be the next six Saturdays, then Harrison, all those ballfields will be played. We'll be hosting our first DIS golf tournament, October 26th, using both North Ark and Winkler courses. Pickle League is still growing. The gym is open Tuesday nights from 6 to 9. They're trying something new with the 5th and 6th grade tackle football program. They've partnered with Hogs Football Organization to arrange four games against them. One with Berryville to create a more competitive experience for the players, who may not want the full travel experience, but want to learn the game. They've partnered with Marty Burlsworth to be able to send the participants of the youth football to a Razorback football game at the end of the season at no cost, so that'd be pretty exciting for the kids. And also continuing to work at the community center campaign. Other activities going on right now, they have NASA Soccer League, Men's Ragball, Coed Ragball, Youth Volleyball, Flag Football, Tackle Football.
Incoming...
Good deal.
Incoming attraction we had heard this morning about the first of the year will be a pickleball tournament.
Oh, a pickleball tournament, he's scheduled now, great.
You'll go to get well.
Any questions for Chuck? All right.
For Linda.
Thank you, Linda. Sean is not with us, so we'll move down to the committees. Joel? All right, excellent. Mitch, hey Vista. Come on up.
Good evening, I'm Tiffany Sackville, the American Corvus official for your point. I talked to you guys about two weeks ago at the community meeting. And I've come for you guys. I went and talked to Jerry, and Miss Christine and everything, a couple of weeks ago. We asked, talked to them about maybe bringing a Vista member on as a cost share for the city of Harrison. And you guys asked last week, or last, two weeks ago, what the Vista member could do for the city of Harrison. I told you, Mayor Jackson was looking, you know, he had some ideas, but didn't divulge them to me. So I don't know if he would divulge them to you guys tonight. I haven't looked. But the cost share cost would be $12,490 per year. And we get billed, Navy, gets billed $474 and some change every two weeks, because that's what American Corvus gets paid. This Vista member would not get any benefits from the city of Harrison or anything, because that would be covered by federal funding. They get dental, eye, health free charge through the Vista program itself. The only thing that the city would be responsible for would be the funding of their living stipend that they would receive every two weeks. So I just come before you guys, and one thing that I wanted to bring up is, it was asked of me to describe what the Vista member would bring to the table, and I brought Cindy Dewitt with me. She, Dan was with me last time. Cindy Dewitt is another Vista supervisor that's with us, and she can tell you the benefits of having a Vista member.
I'm Cindy Dewitt. I'm the Region 2 Prevention Representative with Navy, for North Americans on Partnership for Health Education. And I have a Vista. I've had one for the last two, and I have yours. She's right here, Eva. And she's done a lot for me. They're very supportive in anything that you do, any kind of program or project that you're working on. For me, Eva has been very instrumental in helping me to organize, develop, and maintain a prevention resource outlet. She has helped me to develop a mental health resource guide that kind of goes into a lot of detail about payment sources and that type of thing, and specific things that people might need. I'm always a person, so I don't forget. Assisted promotional and education activities, develop new partnerships and outreach programs. And she's, she helps me to track data and collect numbers on things that I use for process and outcome evaluations. So that's what she's done for me. But there's a lot of other things that Vistas can do that might be more specific for the city. Grant searches, maybe helping in preparing grant applications. Social media updates, maybe web development. I don't know. Any kind of project that the city has been interested in doing, but has not had the resources or manpower to put toward it, we can use Vista for. So I think it would be a win-win, so anyway. Any questions on that?
How many hours does she work?
Forty.
Forty?
Most Vistas work up to 40 hours a week, but they're called full-time Vistas. The least they can work, depending upon the site, is no less than 35. So 35 to 40 hours they have to work. And the only thing that would need to be provided to the Vista member is a computer, access to a printer. They may turn something off for whatever project that was given to them to work on, and some place to be housed.
All right. Committee? Do we have any questions for them? Do we want to move on with anything?
I'd like to ask Luke a question. Luke, if we support this program, where would this money come from?
I would have to come from the general fund at this point. Right now, it'd be reserves, because it's not budgeted until the next year. We would, we can try to find a place in the budget for next year, but we don't have anything in this year's budget right now.
Is that some, some of the department heads want to think about some of their projects?
I think we've had a little talk, and I think we can find stuff for them to do. I think we can utilize them. It's just a matter of if we had the money available.
Interest.
Yeah. And we talked, and we didn't. You know, we don't have it available now, other than reserves. But we'll leave that up to you folks. If you want to, if you want to go there, we can, we can put them to work.
Is there a contract? On how, what's the duration of the contract?
A Vista member reserves a one-year service, and then they re-up if they choose to. And then with the one year, they have to fulfill the one year. At their end of one year, they can choose between a living stipend, which is $1,800, or an educational award to finish their school, or to pay off student loans of $6,200.
Is it possible that we might table this for beyond November 12th?
That's fine. I mean, that would put us at being able to place a Vista with you guys in June.
In June.
Of next year.
June of next year.
Not until June, because we wouldn't bring any more Vistas on until starting the meeting in May. And have to be in our system by May 28th, and they would start at like June 14th or something.
So really, this is, this is a matter for next year's budget?
Yeah, I'd be...
Not for this year's budget.
Yeah, I agree.
Right.
So it may be, it may be more doable.
Because right now, we're bringing on Vistas right now, they have to be in our system by October 4th, and then start October 28th.
I see. So if we don't act on it tonight, then we're off till the next, till June?
Correct.
Till June. Okay. I'd like to request that if...
Do you need a motion table?
Yeah, if that's...
I like that motion.
So we have a motion to table this?
Revisit it?
Revisit in November? In November. We can revisit in November.
Just for a point of order, if there's no motion made, there's nothing to table.
It's table automatically, yeah. Count off automatically.
Luke?
Next year, does the amount go up at all? Just if we're looking at trying to budget it, I would like...
No. The only time the amount goes up is a Vista member receives a living stipend, and it's classified as, they live at poverty level, within the county they would volunteer in. And the last pay raise they got was in July of this year. And the last one for that was a year and a half ago. Yeah, in July.
I didn't know with minimum wage increasing in January 1st.
I don't know how that would work. That would be on Washington DC side that makes the payment specials for Vista members. But I mean, they just, it's whatever the poverty level is in the county, they volunteer in.
Did you say that number was $12,940?
It is exactly. It is $12,490.
Four nine.
And what was the pay raise difference? Do you know that you, I mean...
Like, what?
I think $500.
$10.
So you don't know the percentage, but yeah, it was just...
It just depends on what the Vista member...
It wasn't substantial?
No.
Okay.
And they make $474 and some change right now, every two weeks.
It sounds like a great program.
Yeah, our committee would be $12,000. That's our part of that?
Yes, you would pay the full cost of the Vista member, and you would reimburse Navy, because it would go, Navy would get billed for it. And the bill would look like... This is the bill that Navy gives. And then Navy would turn around and build a city for reimbursement of the cost.
And we don't cover any benefits, Bill?
Nope.
True.
And if we don't take no action on it, they have the opportunity to come back to the council in November.
Okay.
Because this is our cost share right here that we have currently, and she's with the Americans on College Education.
Would you please come back to our committee meeting in November?
It's the second Thursday.
November 14th. Come on, bud. All right, thank you all very much. Appreciate you guys.
Since we're talking about November, I'd like to mention the forum the other night that was held for the community center. And it was a great, it was a great forum. Didn't you think so?
I think it was. It couldn't have went better for...
Linda and Chris and I were there.
No pressure.
There was a...
None taken.
I didn't bring you in this world. Don't want to take care of you though.
Okay.
But anyway, it was a very informative meeting. And I felt it went well for everyone.
Our team did a great job.
Did a great job.
Great job. All right.
Mayor, Rick was very informative. He's at the end of the meeting, unfortunately, and a lot of people left. Maybe next time start it earlier.
Oh, Mayor Rick. Yeah. Was great. Wasn't that great? Oh, wow. Linda, you have anything?
No, sir, I sure don't.
Okay, we'll go on to Mary Jean, I believe, does.
Being shy the way that I am, we have a public safety building, and our administrative leader there is going to explain the contract to us. Approval.
We discussed this in committee a couple of weeks ago. WMD was selected to do the design of the public safety building, and I guess city administrative offices as well. You know, the current budget has been set as five to seven million, depending on how we progress through the design. And as Luke tells us, what the police came and just forged. That would place the architectural contract at about $325,455,000 for the architectural services. That doesn't include civil, biotechnical, things like that. We kind of have to negotiate those. It's also going to be better out here on this city, but we can't enforce the design without approval from the council to the mayor to approve this contract. Anything any questions?
No questions.
Motion to approve contract?
I'd make.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No more discussion? A roll call, please.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus? Linda DeWalt?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joe Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Kent?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. Thank you. Thank you, Wade. Let's move to write down, Bill?
No, no report.
No report. Okay. Well, sir?
Yes, sir. Tonight, we need to start off by putting the property maintenance on its second reading.
Making motion to put the property maintenance code on its second reading?
By title.
By title, I'm on it. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the property maintenance?
An ordinance titled, "The Harrison Property Maintenance Code, Repealing and Replacing Ordinance 1358 and 1349, Dealing with Clean Premises, Violations, and Enforcement."
Okay. Do we have any comments from the audience? No? I guess roll call.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus?
Linda DeWalt?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Okay, next item is the purchasing ordinance. We're here to put that on its first reading.
Need a motion?
Yes.
To approve the purchasing ordinance by, on its first reading by title only?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion, Bill Boswell, and a second by Joel. Any discussion?
Okay. An ordinance titled "The Harrison Property Maintenance Code: Repealing and Replacing Ordinance 1358 and 1349."
And that same thing that went to sleep.
Jeff's going to Cancun next week, he's a little excited.
I think he's there.
Quick enough. I don't know if you want to. They're making the news this week, weren't they, Chris?
He don't care, he fits in pretty good.
They better get out of my way.
Come back in one piece.
All right. An ordinance replacing chapter 3.04 of the City Code of Harrison, Arkansas regarding purchasing.
Okay.
Motion to...
Need any discussion?
We haven't loaded yet.
No. Don't, don't get eager.
Roll call?
Okay.
Linda DeWalt?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Does this have to be read three times?
Yes.
Is there a necessity to go ahead and get it?
It's a blank slate.
Okay, just checking.
All right, moving on down the list. Ordinance doing business with city employees, and I think this is kind of an update to personnel on the list. So we are looking to put this on its first reading, entertain a motion to put it on its first reading.
I'll make that motion by title only. By title only. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Is that in our packet? Uh, it should be...
Uh...
It was added.
It was added later in the day, so you may have to refresh if you...
Okay. I notice I missed it. Now that's a person. Okay, I'm good. Drive off. I just...
Are we ready?
Yes.
An ordinance authorizing certain city employees and officials to contract with the city.
Okay, roll call.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus absent. Linda DeWalt?
Yes.
This is a one-read ordinance, so we'll need a motion to adopt.
Okay, need a motion to adopt?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
Uh, next time we get this, I would like to see your highlight or asterisk or star of those that are added or any changes been made.
Good point. Good point.
By looking at this, you know, you have no idea who's, who's been added and why, and I don't know all these people, so I'd at least like to know who the new ones are.
Okay. All right. You have a motion and a second.
No.
Roll call?
You want this roll, a roll call?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus absent. Linda DeWalt?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
And the next item on the agenda is a resolution about the mini Harris grant, and I think Wade maybe was gonna speak to that.
Yeah, this would be a resolution authorizing the mayor to apply for a grant for up to $50,000 to help, I guess, close the funding gap that we're working with on, and move barriers like around the bathrooms.
So move.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion? Roll call, please.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Wayne Cohn?
Yes.
Chris Head?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch absent. Linda DeWalt?
Yes.
Bill Boswell?
Yes.
Heath Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
That concludes tonight's business.
That's yours. Okay, no old business. Wait a minute, where is, yeah, new business. Lonnie, you're up, sir.
Mayor Jackson, members of city council, thank you very much for plugging me in at the last moment. I sincerely appreciate it. An email was sent out to all of you a couple of weeks ago regarding the opening of the National Guard Armory. And let me give you just, throw a little, little brief history, let's see. The National Guard as we know it today was actually founded in 1903 with the passage of the Federal Militia Act. Prior to that, it was a state militia called the Arkansas Guard. And there was a state militia here in Harrison, which was founded in 1885, and was actually called to duty for the Spanish-American War, although that's only about half were fit for service. And those that were, they served on the, they served on the border of the United States here. But, and then in 1903 with the passage of the Federal Militia Act, the state militias were changed to the National Guard, which then there was federal funding, federal training standards, federal equipment standards, federal uniforms. At that point, they actually became a true reserve component of the United States Armed So the state militia that we had here in Harrison actually officially became the National Guard here in 1907. The Federal Militia Act in 1903 gave the, the state five years to convert over from the state militia to the National Guard. So we have, in effect, have had a National Guard unit in the city of Harrison ever since 1907, until a couple of years ago, when the 142nd Field Artillery was moved out of Harrison and moved to Bentonville. And the armory has been sitting vacant. We have a new unit that has moved into the National Guard Armory, Company A, 2nd Battalion, 153rd Infantry. And we're very glad to have them back. We want the community to welcome them back. And why is it important for the community welcome? It's because they are part of the community. If you realize the dual role of the National Guard, they are the primary combat reserve component of the United States Army. But unless they're on federal active duty, they are that state militia. They are here to serve state, community, and local, to support law enforcement, to step in times of national disaster, or any time that those kinds of forces are needed. So they're here, they're part of the community, they serve the community, and I think it's important that the community welcome them. There's a welcoming, there's an opening ceremony, 19 October, starts at 11 a.m. And the mayor will be there to present a proclamation of welcoming them to our city, back to our city. And I'd hope to see as many as possible from the city council to be there. Right after the opening ceremony, there will be a meet and greet. And prior to that, I'll have a little bit of time on the podium. There'll be some presentations by the mayor, by Judge Hathaway, by Senator Boozman's office, by Senator Cotton's office, by Congressman Woolman's office, and maybe something from our, our local state legislators. And after that, I just want to announce your presence. I want to introduce you individually, but I'll announce that we have members of the city council here, probably ask you to stand, just to be recognized. And then after the welcoming ceremonies are completed, there's a meet and greet, an opportunity if you kind of go around, introduce yourself to the soldiers, to the officers and men there of Company A. I know they'd appreciate it. I really want this community to come out and welcome this new National Guard back into our community. Now, one of the things the National Guard has asked for is that for leaders in the community, they're gonna be there, they've asked that I provide their name and a telephone contact number, so I do need an RSVP from you. I sincerely hope that you'll come. You can RSVP me at, simply, all strung together, all lowercase, one word, Harrison Post with the number 44. So it's Harrison Post 44.
Guys, Christine has all that. If you would want to just connect with her, she can send it.
Please RSVP, I have to have these names numbers entered by the end of the first week of October.
We sure like all of our department heads to be there, 19 October.
11 a.m.
11 a.m., okay.
Starting at 11, and just send Christine a message, and she'll convey to him.
I sincerely appreciate, sincerely appreciate your support, and I hope to see you all there.
What's the address?
National Guard Armory. It's the National Guard Armory there on Airport Road.[1661.12]